Fifteenth. Raymore City Council Work Session. We have a couple items on the agenda tonight, beginning with the citizen's survey.
Thank you, sir. And I'll just kick it off right away by introducing Ms. Haupt to present the citizen's survey to you.
Am I on now? Okay. Great. So, tonight, I will be here talking about the results of our 2015 ETC Citizen Survey. As you may know, this survey has been conducted approximately every two years since 2006 by ETC Institute, which is a company out of Olathe, Kansas, which conducts similar surveys for cities across the country, and more than thirty cities here in the Kansas City metro area. This survey provides a statistically significant snapshot of how our residents perceive the community, and provides overall levels and provides feedback on their levels of satisfaction with the city overall, as well as with the various services that we provide. So, before I jump into the detailed results this evening, I thought I would set the stage first with some big-picture themes that we saw from the results. Where am I pointing this? I know. Sometimes that works. This is part of the buildup. The anticipation. Wait for it. Well, I'm happy to report that, first and foremost, as you look through our results this year, you will see that overall, the residents of Raymore are happy, and they're very satisfied with our community, and that level of satisfaction has been steadily growing since 2006. This year, more than eighty percent rated the quality of life as good or excellent, and the same amount rated the quality of services provided by the city as good or excellent. What's equally impressive is in both of those areas, only two percent rated the city as below average. So, eighty percent said that they are satisfied, and only two percent said that they were below average with their levels of satisfaction, which is great. Another benefit of using a company that conducts these surveys for communities all over the KC Metro and across the country is that we get to benchmark our results against other communities. When we do that, we see that Raymore is setting the standard, both here at home and across the United States. We rated twenty-four percent higher than the national average, and twenty-five percent higher than the Kansas City metro average in overall quality of services that the city provides. In addition, forty-one of the fifty areas that were compared rated above the national average and the KC metro average, which is great. This tells us that not only are we keeping pace, but we're excelling as well. But, of course, our work is not done. Just as this report identifies a number of ways that we are excelling in our service delivery, it identifies opportunities for improvement as well. I'm not going to spend time this evening going through every measure that's identified throughout the report. I want to focus our attention tonight on three key areas, because, in general, our results in 2015 were very similar to the results from 2012. So, first, I'm going to focus on the successes and opportunities since 2012. These would be the areas that we saw statistically significant changes since the last survey. We're going to look at some long-term trends from 2006 to present, and then we'll wrap up with the priority areas identified by ETC for council consideration moving forward. So, let's jump right in. I'm not sure. Hold on. All right. So, first, before we get started, I want to talk a little bit about the methodology of how the survey was conducted. ETC sent this survey to four hundred households in our community, and that was a random sample selected by ETC. This report is also statistically significant, I'll struggle with saying that all night, and has a confidence level of ninety-five percent. This means that if we conducted the survey again, the results would stay the same ninety-five percent of the time. Finally, and importantly, there's a margin of error of four point eight percent. This is important, because it helps us focus our attention on what findings are actually important. You'll see, as you look through the report, that some areas have a little increase of one to two percent, or a little decrease of one to two percent. That's overall statistically not what we need to be looking at. We need to be looking at the ones that have changes of five percent or more, and so that's what we're going to focus on moving forward. So, let's start with the success. These are areas where we had a change, or an increase, of five percent in the levels of satisfaction since 2012. Overall, as you would expect, the police department has very high ratings that have largely remained consistent year to year, but one area is especially noteworthy. So, we asked three questions. How do you feel walking in your neighborhood? How safe do you feel walking in your neighborhood during the daytime? How safe do you feel walking in your neighborhood at nighttime? And how safe do you feel walking on parks and on trails? You can see that one hundred percent of our respondents said that they feel safe in their neighborhoods during the daytime, ninety-seven feel safe at nighttime, and ninety-two percent feel safe in parks and on trails. Now, these ratings are significantly above both the United States and the Kansas City metro averages, and what's pretty impressive, actually, is that the city of Raymore set the high levels of, the high level of satisfaction for all cities in the Kansas City metro area. So, there is no city that is rating higher than our results right here, which is awesome. The next area where we excelled is in snow removal. So, we asked two separate questions. What's your level of satisfaction with snow removal on neighborhood streets? And that was an increase of seven percent. And what's your level of satisfaction with snow removal on major streets, which saw an increase of eight percent? Now, we didn't set any record highs in the metro area, in this area, but we were pretty close. The high level of satisfaction in Kansas City is ninety-two percent on major streets, and we were at ninety percent. So, we're right there. I know this has been a focus area for the last couple of years, so it's great to see that our attention is paying off in these levels of satisfaction as well. The next area is great. I think you don't often see an increased level of satisfaction with the fees that we charge for water and sewer services, but that's exactly what's happened here. It increased six percent since 2012, and has increased twenty-five percent since 2006, even with rate increases almost every year since then. I think this really shows that the conversations we've had recently about water and sewer rates are true in the community, and people are realizing the value they receive for their dollar here, and recognizing the city's efforts to instill the break-even model in this area. So, this is great. And if you have questions, feel free to jump in. I'll continue to go through slides, but please don't hesitate to stop me. Another area where it's always great to see significant increases in levels of satisfaction are items related to code enforcement. The satisfaction with the enforcement of sign regulations increased to six percent, and you can see there's been an upward trend since 2006. I want to take a moment and talk about what our goals should be in this area. So, I think everyone could agree that one hundred percent satisfaction would be the ideal goal, but that's not the reality in some areas. In some, especially like code enforcement, no city is ever going to reach one hundred percent satisfaction. And so, we're able to look at the results the ETC provides, and they show us the city that's doing it the best, what's the highest level that city is receiving. So, for example, in this area, the city that has the highest level of satisfaction related to enforcement of sign regulations is getting a seventy-two percent from their citizens. So, instead of being sixty-four percent out of a hundred percent, we're sixty-four percent out of seventy-two percent. So, that changes the conversation a little bit. And I just point that out, because it does provide some perspective, and is something you should take a look at as you look at individual ratings through the book moving forward. And all of that information is on page thirty-two of the report for reference. Next, moving to parks and recreation. So, we saw a five percent increase in the satisfaction levels with information available about our parks and recreation program, and I think we'll continue to see these rates increase in the future with Nathan's focus in this area, and through the work of our new communications manager. Parks and Recreation had another significant increase in the level of satisfaction with their instructional programs. I know it's often easy to just focus on the sports component of Parks and Recreation, but this is another important programming function that they offer, and these include items like first-aid classes, babysitting classes, et cetera. All right. Any questions about the successes that we've had since 2012? All right. Now, on to our opportunities. So, these are areas where there has been a five percent or more decrease in the level of satisfaction since 2012. So, the first area is in the maintenance of streets, and we saw a fifteen percent decrease in the level of satisfaction in the maintenance of our neighborhood streets, and a fourteen percent decrease in satisfaction in the maintenance of our major streets. However, both of these areas are still up since 2006. In talking to the rest of the team, a key contributing factor here is likely the 2007 bond issue. That bond issue had a significant number of street projects included, so the 2012 spike is likely a result of a number of those projects being completed. You know, this year, the council has committed a lot of capital funding to street projects again, and there's been conversations about including road projects in our upcoming no-tax increase bond issue, so these numbers could go up again in the future.
How do our numbers on that one compare with Kansas City area? Is there a page in our packet where we could see that?
Thirty-two is where all of the comparisons start, or right around there. Let's see, thirty-one. Yep, you can see all of the comparison, the benchmarking data.
So, it's on page twenty-nine.
Okay. So, for Raymore, the maintenance of, we'll do, start with major city streets is sixty-nine percent. The average for the Kansas City area is sixty-three percent, and the average for the United States is fifty-nine percent. When you go to neighborhood streets, the city of Raymore has fifty-five percent. The Kansas City average is fifty-three percent, and the United States average is fifty-six percent. So, higher in major streets, we're higher in major streets, and about right on par when it comes to neighborhood streets. Okay, this next slide is kind of small, so I'll take you through it. One of the questions that we asked is, what was your level of satisfaction with the overall traffic flow and management throughout the community? Now, as an overall rating, this did not show a significant decrease in the level of satisfaction from 2012 to 2015. It dropped about four percent. But we did ask a follow-up question about the levels of satisfaction with traffic flow at various points in the city to provide us with a little more direction. So, this graph represents the levels of dissatisfaction with two groups. The people who overall said they were very satisfied, or satisfied with the overall traffic flow, and then the people who are dissatisfied, or very dissatisfied with the overall traffic flow. So, you can see those who are overall satisfied is gray, and those who are very dissatisfied or dissatisfied are black. So, when you look at this, you can see that although their levels of dissatisfaction change, those who are overall dissatisfied are much more dissatisfied at each of these points. The order, or the intersections where they're dissatisfied in are in the same order. So, that gives us some direction on what to focus on moving forward, and I'll read these to you, because they're small. The area where there's the most dissatisfaction from both groups is the fifty-eight, forty-nine interchange. Then we have fifty-eight at Dean. The overall traffic signaling system, fifty-eight highway, Fox Ridge, Lucy Webb, fifty-eight between North and South Madison, and then fifty-eight at Sunset. So, I can go much more in-depth. We did have a full cross-tabulation run on this, so we know if they said, "I'm satisfied with the overall traffic flow," I can give you specific details for each of those areas. But I think, big picture, and we knew this, I think, going into the survey, based on the way we asked this question, is that the number-one place that we're seeing the highest level of dissatisfaction is at that fifty-eight and forty-nine interchange. And we even said in the survey, this is located in Belton. And so, I think a lot of the dissatisfaction and the decrease that we're seeing in that overall rating probably comes from the level of dissatisfaction that exists from this point in our traffic system. So, there are a couple of things we need to look at. There's an opportunity to, of course, do a better job in our ability to control what's happening at that intersection, and I think it's another reason why it's important that we continue to participate in regional programs like Operation Green Light that help us manage the traffic flow through that area.
And we've sent a tersely worded letter to MoDOT in Belton about this whole issue.
Yeah.
I doubt if that's going to do us any good.
It probably presents an opportunity to better collaborate with both of them here as well. The reason that we initially included that is because we, people don't always know that it's not in Raymore, and so it impacts our residents every single day. And so, when they're saying, "I'm not satisfied with the overall traffic flow throughout town," we are trying to figure out, is it this area in particular that you're not satisfied with, or is it other areas throughout town? And so, we're trying to figure out, is changing this rating in our control, or is it not in our control, which is why we included that.
We, it is relative to traffic, easily, the number-one concern slash complaint that I get is, when is Raymore going to do something about the bridge?
And I know, the last citizen's survey, it was very overwhelming, and in the comments section of that traffic part, that that was like the number-one complaint, and so I think that was part of our mission setting up here. But this one was, you know, is there anything we can control that we're having problems with?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Have to be, because Raymore is pushing it.
Okay. So, the next area is the city's openness to public involvement, and I think this is an area where we do need to do some further analysis. Since 2012, the level of satisfaction with how open the city is to public involvement has dropped by nine percent. Now, there aren't necessarily any less ways for the public to be involved in what's happening with the city. Probably, there are more, but I think what's potentially happening is we're not doing a very good job communicating how to get involved, and explaining what happens with the input that we receive. So, we've had some conversations about this already, and it's already a top priority for us. As you know, public input and engagement is a critical part in the strategic planning process, and it will also be an important component of our new communication manager's position.
I am surprised that that is lower, because we've just started the Arts Council, and that is citizen involvement, and people are very interested in that, so I'm surprised it didn't go up rather than decrease.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but this survey, I'm going to ask the question, was this taken before we appointed the Arts Commission?
It was approximately the same time that all of that was happening, but there are, I don't think that we can rest on the fact that we've just started the Arts Commission, because that allows for the Arts Commissioners to be involved, and we've got twenty thousand people in this city. So, we need to do a better job of letting people know how they can get involved, and pulling them into involvement, which, coming up in the next month, there's going to be an entire component of the strategic plan, that the challenge of the strategic plan is going to be pulling them into involvement to give you all input.
Problem with people reading stuff that we send them, is that an issue?
So, we'll talk in a second about how people get information about the city, but we do know that, so we say, you know, what's the best way for us to communicate to you, is one of the questions we get, we ask in the survey, and I believe the top three are city publications, the city website, and utility bill inserts, so, of all things. So, I think, you know, that gives us where we really need to focus, pushing our information out through. We have a lot of other channels that we use, but we certainly need to put our emphasis on those top three. The next area is the level of satisfaction with the appearance of public areas along streets. This dropped by six percent. And again, this is some, an area where some additional study may be necessary. You all have heard recently about a number of programs we already have in place to address this, including a program to focus on, focus on cleaning up detention ponds, a median beautification programs. A number of our areas are kind of no-man's land, they're not owned by homeowners or HOAs, so sometimes they aren't kept very well. And then there's the weed prevention program along fifty-eight highway. So, these are all steps in the right direction, but without some additional study, we aren't sure if we're actually addressing the real concerns here. So, this will be something to take a look at moving forward. Next, we have the number of outdoor athletic fields. Satisfaction dropped by six percent in this area. In talking with Nathan Mustine, there are a couple of contributing factors at play here, even though the actual number of fields has not changed since 2012. According to base, or to Nathan for baseball, we're actually at capacity, and we're overscheduling some of the fields that we already have in order to accommodate both our rec leagues and the tournaments that we're bringing in. And then, when you look at soccer, it's both an issue of quantity and quality. On game days, there are enough fields, but we get a lot of complaints about the quality of the fields. And then on, for practices, we have more teams practicing on our fields than those who actually play in our leagues. They're teams from other leagues and neighboring communities, so the number of fields does become an issue. So, there are a couple of things that we need to look at in this area moving forward.
May I ask if it's because of overuse of the fields and the, them not being able to be reconditioned in time? You know, because that's what it sounds like to me, and I don't want to assume that's it, because I don't think that the fields are in poor condition. I just want to hear what staff has to say, is their opinions as to why we are getting negative complaints back, or negative comments as for the conditions of the fields.
Originally, those fields, the soccer fields, are essentially pasture, and so, significant amount of money was not invested in those fields to grade them, drain them, irrigate them, that would rise that level of satisfaction for those. So, from a yearly standpoint, we do irrigate, I mean, aerate, oversee, do those things, but when you don't have the ability to irrigate and water them, they weren't prepped or developed properly, you're, over time, you are going to wear them down. Now, on a day-to-day basis, from a game standpoint, they do wear out. The issue with soccer is the fact that your playing seasons are right in your growing seasons. So, the things that we need to do to those fields, we can't do them, because we're using them at the time, and then when they're free to be able to do those things, it's the wrong time of year. So, it's kind of a catch-22 when it comes to soccer. So, ultimately, to answer your question, is the fields weren't developed the proper way. We just took land that was available and made best use that we could of them.
Another area, or opportunity, is the citizens' level of satisfaction with cities and city employees' responsiveness to a request or a concern, dropped by six percent. We did do a cross-tabulation on these results, and looked at, are there any specific departments that we needed to address, and there wasn't. It was a whole variety of departments that people indicated they had last communicated with. So, we're also not sure if this question, based on the way it was phrased, meant that we did not respond at all, or if we were unable to resolve the request or concern to their satisfaction. And so, we need to do some additional research in that area. I will say, if you look at the other measures related to customer service, including courtesy, were we easy to contact, and the technical competence and knowledge of the employees, and we did see on-par levels of satisfaction in those areas, and are actually above both the Kansas City and US average. So, we'll need to take an extra look at this area moving forward. We also saw a decrease in the quality of programming on our cable access channel. This dropped by five percent. And this is one of the areas that I was talking about, where we asked the follow-up question that said, how do you best want to receive information from the city? The government access channel was second from the bottom, and so it is not a top way that people get information or want to get information, so we really have to work on finding a balance here between providing quality programming, but not investing a lot of resources in this medium, because we know it's not where people get information.
I know your video quality suffers as well on the internet.
Yes.
My wife's always complaining about that.
Yeah. It does. Next, we have a decrease in satisfaction of five percent in the enforcement of our residential, and it's actually exterior, maintenance. And this is certainly a tough area to get high ratings in. People are generally not satisfied in this area, and I know that we're looking at some program changes to help resolve some of these issues in a more timely fashion as well.
And as we've discussed with you all before, this is kind of a tough one, because we, because the survey is random, if you're, if you're doing it really good, and someone has been, feels that they have suffered under your enforcement, you're going to get a bad rating. And if you're doing it really good, and somebody feels you haven't done it really good fast enough, you're still going to get a lower rating. So, you kind of get hit from both ends of the spectrum with this one, but we, it is an area that bears further looking at by staff, so we're going to probably be drilling down to get some answers to those questions in the future.
This would include mowing of barns?
This does not include mowing, that's a separate question. This is strictly exterior residential maintenance. Okay. Another question that we asked in general is, are we meeting your needs within the city of Raymore? And residents could answer yes or no in each of these areas. So, this part of the list shows every area where we are meeting at least fifty percent of the residents' needs, and the next slide I will show you are the areas where we are not meeting at least fifty percent of their needs. I haven't identified the last two, transportation opportunities and employment opportunities, as specific areas for improvement based on that fifty percent criteria, but you can definitely see there's a significant drop between parks and rec options at eighty-two percent, and the last two at sixty-five and fifty-five percent. So, certainly, areas will need to keep in mind as we move forward. So, the second half of this list are areas where we are not meeting their needs. So, less than fifty percent said that we are meeting their needs in these areas, and we have cultural activities and the arts, access to restaurants and entertainment, and access to quality shopping. And these points actually lend themselves well to establishing baseline measures for new initiatives we have going on, including the Arts Commission, and the changing approach we're taking to economic development. So, I would hope to see some significant increases in these measures the next time that we survey. So, let's move on to some long-term trends. So, as we talked about earlier, when you look from 2006 to 2015, satisfaction ratings in improved or stayed the same in 68 of the 71 areas that we survey on. And there were significant increases in the level of satisfaction in 60% of these areas. So, I've just included the areas that have the top increases in satisfaction, but you can see the full list in the executive summary in the report. That last one is condition of city sidewalks. I know that's cut off, there we go. All right. And now on to the priorities section of the survey. So, ETC has a philosophy that cities should target resources to services that, one, have the highest level of importance to citizens, and, two, services where citizens are least satisfied. So, they put that together into a tool they call the Importance Satisfaction Rating Tool. And essentially, what it does is assign a mathematical factor to each of the areas, and it helps identify what are very high priorities, what are high priorities, and what are medium priorities. So, when you look at overall city services, you'll see we have two areas that have been identified as very high priorities, the flow of traffic and congestion management, and the overall maintenance of city streets. And then we have one high priority, which is the overall value you receive for your tax dollar. And then there are eight items that have been identified as medium priorities. ETC encourages cities to focus on the very high and high priority levels when they're identified. So, and they also provide a visual display of the importance and satisfaction ratings. Along the horizontal axis is the level of importance. So, you can see from left to right, the level of importance increases. And then the vertical axis is level of satisfaction. So, from bottom to top, the level of satisfaction increases. So, based on this system, the focus would be on the right side of the graph. You can see in the bottom right, these are items that are high importance, and we have a low level of satisfaction in them right now. And if you look, these, in this Opportunities for Improvement section, those match the very high and high priorities that were from the last slide. Above that are areas that ETC recommends we put continued emphasis on. So, these are areas that have high importance and high satisfaction, and that's the quality of parks and recreation programs and facilities. On the left side of the graph, these are areas that citizens have rated as low importance or lower importance in the scheme of things. The top corner are areas where we are currently exceeding their expectations. It's a low level of importance, but a high level of satisfaction. And then on the bottom-left side, these are areas where there is low satisfaction, but they've also rated them as low levels of importance as well. So, these are what they would call the less important items, and it's communication and building codes. So, of course, we all know that all of these areas are important services that the city provides. This graph is just one way to look at it as you start to set priorities and invest resources moving forward. Questions about that? So, next I want to move on to some of the other special questions that we included as part of the survey. The first one is, how supportive would you be of the city developing a regional draw outdoor athletic complex? The very supportive and supportive categories equal about 44%. Neutral was 22%. Not supportive was 20%, and people who indicated they didn't know was 14%.
And a number of these, but specifically this one, was asked relative, to give the council additional information, because of course it is one of the listed items, is a possibility for the no-tax increase bond issue. Based on this, you'd see about 44% who might be willing to vote for an issue concerning.
It's all well and good for us to say we want that, but what happens if Grandview, Belton, or at least some at Blue Springs, they develop it, there's no need of us duplicating it. So, in some ways, this is kind of a false sense for the council. There's other things we have to look at besides this.
Okay. The next question we asked is, would you use the public transportation program for senior citizens and persons with disabilities? 69% said no, and 31% said yes. We then asked a follow-up question of those people who answered yes, and said, if you were to use it, would you like it to have a regularly scheduled route, or it be an appointment-based door-to-door service? 57% said they wanted it to be appointment-based. 45% said they would like a regular schedule, and 7% indicated they didn't know. That does equal more than 100%. You could check multiple options.
Did they ask the elderly? Did they sort out the elderly?
They did, yes. So... When you looked at people, so, of the question, would you use the public transporta, would you use the program, people 55 to 64, 35% said yes, and people 65-plus, 50% said yes. And we didn't pull out people who had disabilities. And then finally, we asked everyone, what would be the best way to pay for that program? And we had just over 75% said the riders should pay a fee, just under 25% said the city should pay the fee, and there was a group, a small group, who indicated they didn't know. Was this out of people who said they would use it, or this is everybody? This is everybody. Okay. That's all I have for you this evening. The full survey results will be posted on the city website for our residents to see. And then in addition, we'll be including information in an upcoming edition of the Raymore Review as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I held off and asked some questions to me a couple of frames ago when it spoke about the outside complex, athletic complex. Was there a follow-up question as to an amenity that wasn't an athletic complex that had different results, or was that the only question?
This is the only question that was added.
All right. The part on the satisfaction on page 48, the Parks and Rec item, it talks about indoor spaces. That seemed to be up there just as high with respondents as maintenance of streets in our neighborhoods. Is there a reason we didn't address that this evening?
So, these, what we're only looking at are the overall city priorities. On that graph, it's only looking at among the parks and recreation items.
Right.
Where should it be? So, it doesn't take into account that versus police, or that versus streets, or that versus anything else.
Thank you.
So, yeah, no problem. Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple of observations, if you don't mind. The first is, keep in mind that there are probably some things that you don't have control over. So, if people say they want more employment opportunities, I don't know how many people who live in Raymore work in Raymore. I would presume, you know, you're part of a regional economy, and, and that trying to do something about that, this doesn't make a, to me, doesn't make a lot of sense. There's another phenomenon here that I don't understand at all, Meredith. When you talked about the opportunities, in every one of the categories that you went through except one, it was low in 2006, higher in 2012, lower in 2015, but higher than 2006. In every single one except one. Something systematic, right? That's not idiosyncr, I mean, it's not like you can't analyze a single one of those and say, well, that went up and this went down, then it went up. They all did that. And what would be interesting is to ask ETC, is this the same in other jurisdictions? Because if it is, then something broader in the region is going on that had to do with the economics or something that, you know, low, high, low, but higher than, I mean, it was really bizarre, I don't get that, but...
So, they did actually explain that to us.
Oh, me?
Yes, as part of their results. That was systematic throughout all of the surveys that they've seen in the last couple of years, that satisfaction levels are slightly down since 2015 across the board. They didn't go into why, but that isn't unusual.
So, that, see, so what that means, though, is that you have to be very cautious when you respond to that. Because there's something syst, there's something systemic about it that you trying to respond to it probably isn't going to make a difference. And that, it's just a thought.
Do you think that had anything to do with the recession?
Well, you know, you want to say that everything in some way has to do with the economy. I, I, you know, I really don't know. I mean, I'm open to what you guys have to say about that.
An aspect that I'd be curious about, since you bring that up, is, you know, we're seeing that here in Raymore. Would we be able to see that regionally in Kansas City, nationally, or, you know, just statewide? Is that something that's just really unique to us in Raymore? Or are we seeing this trend regionally?
And again, as the doctor said, it is, we have to be careful in the response. I think it points to two areas where we do have some opportunities. One is the increased involvement that we're realizing down at Mark, so that we can work together with other communities to bring those up. It also gives us an opportunity, quite frankly, from a competitive standpoint, to perhaps differentiate ourselves in some of those areas. If we can identify appropriate themes associated with that. For, for those who have not, the gentleman sitting to my right is, is not with ETC. He introduced himself to most of you, Dr. John Nalbanjan, Professor Emeritus from KU. And I'd go into all of his other titles and awards, but it would take some time tomorrow to get through all of those. But, he's going to be with us for this, and it was important for him to hear the survey in developing our next steps as far as the strategic plan is concerned. And he's going to conduct an exercise here on July 6th, and we'll also be kind of kicking off that exercise in our second agenda item tonight. But, feel free to ask him as many questions as you can tonight, too, about this, because he's seen a lot of these. And of course, the, the management team is here to answer any other questions you might have relative to some of the details, or what their thoughts are as far as what's manifesting itself here.
With that, should we get into the second item, then?
Absolutely, sir.
One, one of the, a little anecdote. I was talking to an economist at KU, who, who's on the revenue estimating team. So, you know, he's statewide revenue estimating team, so, you know, he's, he really knows, he knows what he's talking about. And I said to him, I said, Joe, to what extent does a jurisdiction in a metro area, does it actually have an independent economy? Right? Because we think, well, if we do this, this will happen to our economy and this and that. And he said, you know, he said, it's really marginal. He said, there are, there are exceptions, but, but they're exceptions. It's almost like they're, they ha, they happen by chance. But, but really, we're talking about regional, like, regional economies. I know somebody told me one time, it really struck me, when we were talking about the Missouri-Kansas metro area and the competition and this and that, and so on and so forth. And they said, it's a false competition because, because the real competition is between the Kansas City region and Omaha and Oklahoma City. So, if you take a bigger, I mean, I think it really is important to be able to focus on, all right, what is it that you can do that will have an impact on the quality of life of the people in your community? It's like traffic congestion. I mean, like you were saying, if, if, if somebody is, is, is on an arterial, and they pass between Raymore and the next, I don't know what your adjacent cities are, but they might not even know they've left Raymore, right? And they hit a traffic jam, and if they hit a traffic jam every day, they're going, Raymore, we need to do something about traffic congestion, when in fact, so these things are, these things can be, can, can get very complicated, right? All right. Well, what I'd like to do is, so, I'll go ahead, Jim? Okay. So, I'll, I'll just add a little something that many of you probably don't know. I was on the City Commission in Lawrence, Kansas, myself, for two four-year terms. And we have a five-member council, we call ourselves a commission. And we have an election every two years. We elect three of the five every two years. The top two vote-getters get a four-year term, and the third-place person gets a two-year term. So, every two years, citizens have a chance to elect a new majority, but there are always two people that carry over. And then by tradition, the top two vote-getters in that four-year term get a term as mayor, by tradition. So, I was mayor in one of my, one, in the first term, and also mayor in the second term. So, I, I have that experience as well as the study I do, in going around, like Jim said, and talking to groups and councils and so on, and so on, and so forth. Okay. So, so what, when you look at these results, what, or heard about these results, what, what struck you?
I have been on the council 10 years, and every year it has been streets. It's always the major concern for people, streets, streets, streets. And one of the things that I have noticed, we've got two streets, two minor arterials that go from 291 into 49 Highway. One of them is 58, and the other one is Huback. And both of them are, as I said, both of them are minor arterials, but the traffic speed is not the same on both of them, and it should be. A minor arterial has a certain traffic speed, and we should adhere to that, and we're not doing it. Those are some of the things that maybe help on our congestion.
Okay. Are there's that, things that struck you as you heard the results, or you, you looked at, looked at the results yourself?
The thing that I saw, I, I went through and made up and down arrows next to every line on all the, when, where it was Raymore, the region, and then the country. And with the exception of, what was the one? That was, well, the, the one that really, that, that was consistently dropping was the economic development in the city. And that was the, the only one, and that's probably the one you were referring to a minute ago, that didn't have the up and down trend. But, yeah, I had noticed that same kind of thing. I thought, wow. But, you're looking at the difference between a six-year difference between 2006 and 2012, and then a three-year difference. And so, perspective and memory sometimes can maybe sway ideas as well.
Sure. What are the things? Yeah?
I just, I noticed that even though, as far as like our opportunities, our, our place where our percentage went down the most was maintenance of streets, but we still are above, you know, our percentage is higher than the percentage for the United States and the Kansas City metro area.
Yeah.
You know, the, I could have taken the survey, and I think I would have taken it and come out just about how it came out myself. So, that, that didn't really surprise me. But, I was curious on really how they chose the people to take the survey. If you look at the ages, the age groups, they were almost consistently equal. But then when you look at how long the residents lived here, that was kind of skewed. But then when you look at how long the residents lived here, that was kind of skewed. The more than twenty years was the lowest number of people. And I just wondered how they picked who, who did the survey and how they did that.
Sure. It is a truly random selection, so they have all of the addresses in the community, and they send out the results, and they, they keep doing follow-ups until they get the required number to have it statistically significant. Yeah, they were very nicely distributed. Yeah.
Uh-huh. It, it also would be interesting, I mean, the things you don't know, right? So, it would be interesting to know the difference between people who vote and people who don't vote, and what their perceptions are, and whether or not you would feel more responsive to people who actually do vote in local elections versus those who don't, or whether, you know, you feel obligated to the total community. You know, I was doing something like this in Manhattan Beach in California just a little while ago, and one of the council members said to me, it was very, I, I, it just really struck me. He said, "One of the things, one of the most challenging things for a council member and a council as a whole is distinguish between two roles that you play. On the one hand, you are a delegate representing constituents, okay? And in that sense, you, you, you follow what they want, okay? You determine what do they want, and then, okay, we'll do it. On the other hand, though, there's a, there's a counter role." And he said, "That role is, you are not a representative of the citizens, you are a trustee of the community." So, when you think of the role of trustee, you might not do what X, Y, or Z wants to have done. And the challenge that you have, both individually and collectively, right, is trying to say, "Okay, when am I going to be, serve as representative? When am I going to serve as trustee?" And then you can imagine the differences that you might have when one of you, or two of you, or three of you, or four of you are saying, "Well, I'm a representative in this case." And the other four say, "No, this isn't good for the community." And, or, well, you play districts and wards and all that stuff. You run into this, run into this, I'm sure. But this is all part of what I think, when you look at the strategic planning process. And in the strategic planning process, will you act more in the role of trustees of the community? Or will you act more in terms of delegates? What do you hear people wanting? And what, what role will you take there? And you have to think about that, because there's no simple, there's no simple answer to that.
I think it's because the survey says in two years' time, whatever it is, and then a lot of the things in which they do, we say, "What do you want to do in short term, in two years?" We on the council don't think in terms of two years, even though that's what our terms are. We think in terms of five years, in terms of ten years. And so, we have to decide what those streets are going to be, not just to fix this street, but what the streets do we need to improve and add to in the next ten or fifteen or twenty years. We are the future, we're the ones that talk about the future. And it's, most of the citizens don't get involved in it, it's just what's happening right now. And I think that most of us think in terms of trustees rather than as representatives.
See, and that is a trustee, that's a statement a trustee would make, right?
Well, excuse me...
And then you hear, though, you hear the, wait, I understand all that. But I got to drive this street every single day, and man, my kids aren't safe when they're trying to walk that street. Now, you get a, you get a stop sign on that street, you get a str-...
Well, I think that's where the, you know, communicating and people knowing what we're doing and how we're doing it is so important and finding the best way to do that.
Yeah.
You know, because sometimes you have information that they don't have. They don't have it because it's not, we're keeping it from them.
Yeah.
They just don't have it, or they don't know it.
Yeah.
So, that's where you can run into that, uh, fighting against one and the other.
Yeah. And that's where your channels of communication become important, too, right? Well, let me tell you a little bit about just the way I look at the strategic planning process. And it's, it's changed a little bit over, over time. And, and let me start with the notion of the relationship between the political and the administrative spheres, because that's where my thinking always, always starts. And traditionally, we've thought of, of trying to separate the wor- can you hear me back, back here, okay? Separate the worlds, the political world and the administrative world largely in order to ensure that the administrative professional would feel comfortable saying to you what you need to know rather than what you want to hear. And so, some protections there in that separation. The separation, though, and the concept of separation, it, it, it hides, it hides from us some, sometimes, the, um, the indisputable, indisputable observation that nothing effective gets done unless you can connect the two spheres. In other words, the way I look at it is, in order to get anything done effectively, you have to have, it has to be politically acceptable and administratively sustainable. So, we have to agree on what we want to do, okay? And we have to be able to do it. And there's a gap there, and, and we have to work that, when you try to get something done, you're trying to work that gap. It was just like that question having to do with the, the outdoor rec center or that big, big thing. You know, is forty-four percent constitute political acceptability? Are, can, do you have the money to do it, even if you wanted to do it? The compa- the competition that's involved? So, so part of, part of the dynamic is trying to create, when we run into these issues, the political acceptability, can we get it? And that's where oftentimes you talk about timing. You know, if you say, "Well, the timing isn't right here," what you're saying is not politically acceptable at this, at, at this, at this, at this point. Now, the reason why, the reason why I bring that, I bring that up is because usually what happens is, issue by issue, as we go issue by issue, we're looking at the political acceptability administrative sustainability dynamic, issue by issue. When you develop a master plan, now, you must have, like, you, you probably have a land use master plan, and maybe a parks and rec ma- do you have a parks and rec master plan? Well, see, what you're doing with a master plan is you're trying to create an umbrella of political acceptability. See, when you adopt the plan itself, there should be some, you know, broader sense of, this is the thrust of the land use that we're, that, that we're adopting. Now, in each case, you're going to run into a little bit of something, but hopefully you have something a little broader so that you don't have to start from scratch in each case. When you do a strategic plan, to me, what you're trying to do is you're trying to really create a broad umbrella of political acceptability that, that, that contains the concept of what you want, what, what you, what citizens want this community to look like. Okay? So that, so that when each item comes up, we don't have to fight over each and every item, because we already have a scent, "Don't do that, that, that's not part of the strategic plan. This is part of the strategic plan, so let's figure out how we're going to get these things, these things done." And that's the way I think that we should approach this. Now, the political acceptability part gets very complicated, though, by two factors that we're going to run into, and you run into them all the time. The first is, the matter, no matter how hard you try, a political issue by definition is an issue where after all the facts are known, we can still disagree over what we ought to do. Okay? After all the facts are known, we can still disagree over what we ought to do. If, if the issue could be decided simply on the basis of facts, why would we vote? It doesn't make any, it doesn't make any sense. That's what I call a two-plus-two problem. You're not dealing with two-plus-two problems. And what that mean, Meredith's laughing because she's heard this a hundred times. What this means is that you have to engage fundamental political values. And those political values always conflict. And the idea of trying to develop political acceptability is having to work those political values in negotiation and compromise and voting to say, "Okay, this is where we're going to be." And I have a handout here that I wanted to show you. Maybe you can give a couple, one right here and one over there, and we'll just get these And I, I don't mean to go through these, but I just wanted to show you that the reason why it's not a simple matter to come up with, like, a strategic plan, is because when you look at these four values, when you look at these four values, what you'll find is, for the eight of you, you will disagree on how these values ought to be ranked. And then you may disagree on different issues, how they ought to be ranked, or in general, how they ought to be ranked, so that what it means is, first, there is no one value profile that is preferred or the best, and that's why you have to do politics. And, and then there's another piece that goes with this as well, another complicating piece, which is the idea of the relationship between staff and council when we talk about planning and strategic planning. And we, you and the staff, you use the same words to talk to each other, okay? And you don't realize you're actually speaking a different language. And the ability to understand and translate the languages is very important when it comes to actually understanding the strategic plan, what it means and, and what it means. Now, I'll hand out another little, here's another little handout here. This one didn't duplicate very well, but... But this is the handout that I have, which draws the differences in the logic, okay? And the reason why I'm giving you this one is because... I want you to look halfway down on that one item where it says the, what is it, is it the activity? What is it? The conversation. The difference between the conversation of what do you hear and what do you know, and the idea of data plans and reports versus passion, dreams, and stories. Now, the reason why I draw that distinction and why I'm drawing it here and how, what it means to me in terms of strategic planning is, I think when we do strategic planning, we are prone to approach it from an analytical framework, okay? So that we talk about vision, mission, goals, objectives, those are not foreign terms to you, right? Those come from an analytical, to me, an analytical mind frame. Now, when I ask you about political acceptability and developing a politically acceptable future for this community that you could buy in, not only as a representative but as a trustee, okay? Is that going to be totally a rational process? Or is there going to be some emotion built into that? Hello? Okay? So, it's not a simple matter of, "Let's sit down and let's rank, order this, and then we can come with this, and then we can go up with this." Okay? So that before you can draw the vision, okay, and the major goals and objectives, to me, when you do the strategic planning, you have to be able to build in an emotional component. I don't mean people raving all over the place, but I mean, you have to be able to capture the spirit of the, of the community as it's reflected in the way you think about these, these things. Now, in, in, in the exercise that we're going to do next week, that's what we're going to try to do. So, what we're going to try to do is, I want to capture your dreams for the community, okay? That's the way I want you to think about this. When you think about the community in the future, what are your dreams? Okay? But, but, there's another piece to this. It's not just dreams that charge the emotion of the community when it looks at the future. It's its fears as well. And if we don't acknowledge the fears, it doesn't mean they're not there. And it doesn't mean they won't be obstacles, and it doesn't mean they won't come back to haunt us. So, what I'm going to ask you to do next week is not only to articulate your dreams for the community, but what are your fears? And here's the process that we're going to be using for next week, okay? Or, whenever. But what would it be if you were, why would you hire a professor if you didn't want homework? Huh? I'd feel bad. So, take a look at the first question, okay? You've been absent from Raymore for ten years. During that time, you've heard nothing about the city. You return, and after this ten years, you drive around, you talk with people, and you conclude, "This is perfect. I could not have wished for anything more." What have you seen, what have you heard that leads you to your positive conclusion? And just make a little list to yourself, okay? And bring it with you, all right? And then you return after ten years and you conclude, "This is a disaster. What on earth got into these people?" What have you seen and heard that leads you to this negative conclusion? Okay? And make a list there. You don't have to list five items, if you have just two, that's fine, okay? And then here's the process. Each of you will select one item from, from your first list, and we'll share it, we'll put it up on the board, okay? And then after we've been around once, we'll go around again and again until we get all the items. You'll find that you have things in common, so it will be duplicated, it won't, it won't take forever. And then we'll do the same thing with the fears. And then what we'll do is we'll try to combine thematically the dreams and fears. So, we'll try to find themes. So, see, my hope is that these themes, this is my hope, I don't know if we can do this, but my hope is that the themes, I know Meredith can do this, that's why I'm so happy you hired Meredith, one of our smartest graduates ever, you know?
I hate them.
But, but that what we can do is to connect the themes of the dreams and fears with some of the priorities in the cer- citizen survey. See, that would be really cool if we, we can do that. I don't know that we can do that, right? But I hope we can do that. If we can do that, then it could be possible, I'm just speculating now, it could be possible then to structure the citizen engagement around the themes. So, it's not, "What do you want?" Because you've already done the survey, so you don't want to just, "What do you want?" It's just, "Let's talk about these five themes and see whether we can..." Now, I don't know whether that can work, work or not, okay? As a final exercise then for the evening, what we're going to do is, I'm going to ask you, probably in pairs or, or single, I don't know, each of you to pick one of the themes and to write a paragraph that's inspirational for the rest of us about one of the themes, okay? Now, we did this in Manhattan Beach, and we walked away, all of us walked away with this glow in our, in our heads, it was just glowing, because it was really, you know, you, you really did capture a spirit of, what is it, you know, what does good traffic control mean? You know, like, "I can't believe I drove down so-and-so street, and it didn't take me forever, and I was thinking about my job and thinking about my kids, and I didn't have to worry about the car in back of me and in front of me." And I started to yell, but I recognized that that was just yelling out of habit, and I didn't really... but I recognized that that was just yelling out of habit, and I didn't really need to yell because nobody..." You know what I mean? Then I saw people on the tram, and the tram was going all the way to... Anyway, those are the kinds of things that you can have some, have some fun with, okay? So that's what we'll be doing next week. I do want you to think more about the survey itself, because we'll start off again just saying, you've thought about it a little bit, maybe you've looked at some of the results some more. What, what, what stands out for you again? And please do not, do not dismiss the extraordinarily positive results you have here. Right? I mean, it, it, when I saw this, I go, "Whoa, pretty remarkable. I don't know what they did, or I don't know what kind of place this is, but doing all right." Okay? So, it's Raymar, yeah. So that's whatever, see, I want to know. See, I want you to capture that. Let's capture it, okay?
For those of you that haven't read the comments, all the write-in votes at the end of the packet, before you do this, don't read them. Because they're all the, there are some positive things, but there are some individual complaints that might hinder your dream board.
Thank you so much. The, uh, one of the takeaways that, that I kind of get from this, and it's the same sense that I get from the council when, when we're meeting in our ward meetings, is that you all really see how profound the two planning processes that you're going through right now are. One's going to be the strategic plan that's going to lead to our goals, and the other one, of course, is all the work that the council is doing on the no-tax increase bond issue, all of them involving citizen engagement, and I, I think it is very interesting, it's, it's very powerful that we're doing both of them at the exact same time. A lot of work for the council in going through all of this, but the same excitement that I hear from the possibility of setting the direction with, with a bond issue for the next 10 years, I also hear relative to the strategic plan. So really neat process that we're kicking off this evening, and I hope you all feel the same way. Thank you, Doctor.
I see you have other items on your agenda, so, um, I've sat through over 400 of these meetings, council members, so if you don't mind, I'll pass. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, we have got, go ahead.
Just to double check, this is what we need to bring back July 6.
That's correct. July 6 is the meeting for the strategic plan.
Okay, we got another item on the agenda tonight, future no-tax increase bond issue discussion.
Thank you, Your Honor. If, I do not know, again, this will be on the agenda for every work session that you have until the item is finalized and possibly beyond. I did have one item of note relative to it that I wanted to discuss with the council. I, I believe that the council has pretty much come to the consensus, at least at this point, and tentatively agreed that we will be, right now, targeting April of 2016 for the no-tax increase bond issue. There has been a milder consensus that at the close of this fiscal year, you would like to have the preliminary final list done that you would like to see on that particular issue, which then gives the month of November to truly finalize that up, and the month of December for the reading of the two ordinances associated with putting it on the ballot, which had, the deadline for that then is January, so the ordinances would be read in December. Associated with that, there has been some discussion on the part of the council, individually in the ward meetings, I think it was even mentioned at the table, about the possibility for receiving some citizen input in one form or another prior to that, the finalization of the list is how I took it, not necessarily after it's already on the ballot and is part of an informational scheme, which would also be in place. So I, I was kind of looking for, for two things from the council relative to that. Number one, would you like to have a town hall meeting prior to finalization of the list? If that is the case, would you like that town hall meeting to be after you have the initial draft yourselves, or would you like to have it to get to the initial draft that you're then tweaking in the month of November? If it was the wanting to get full input on everything that's on that list before you all come to some sort of a finalization, a town hall meeting could be scheduled as early as late July, and if it was the, the latter, the town hall meeting could be scheduled for early November with the council making a final list at its second work session in November. But just kind of looking for input, feedback from the council, your, you all's discussion, and I know some of you are also giving serious consideration of the possibility of ward town hall meetings to also discuss this, so that may factor into your discussion.
My initial thought on this is that I, I think we should, first of all, this list is a very fluid concept, so I, I'm hesitant to want to dive right into a strict list too soon, especially as times continue on. We always have pretty extensive conversations around budget time, priorities come and change, so I would be more inclined to say, until we have more of our budget discussions over, I don't really feel comfortable trying to pin a list down just because some of the priorities may change in our budget discussions. So, um, I, I don't think we need to wait all the way to November, but, uh, at, at least get past August, and we're still kind of chewing on this list anyway, so again, I don't want to rush it, so.
And, and at no point did staff have any sort of a, uh, concept that the list would, the, our deadline is, the, it, the list has to be finalized so the ballot language can be in place for the two ordinances that have to be read in December. If you all want November to do final tweaking on both the ballot language, which takes about two weeks to put together for the ordinances, um, that, that final, that finalization would have to be done beginning about November 1, but that gives you until the end of this fiscal year, October 31st, to actually come to that conclusion on the items you want. I was just, my question was only, do you see a citizen input component to it, or is the council, and we have not had that in the past. The, the 2006 bond issue, the list was determined by the council, the, the citizens were engaged actually after the ordinance had been read and it had been put on the ballot. Then there was a series of informational meetings for the citizens.
I'd like to have the people involved in it in the beginning, because it's kind of like these surveys and things that you get, they'll say, "Do you want A, B, or C?" Well, maybe you'd like to have D, but it was never brought up. So I think when you go to the beginning and have people, you get some ideas of what, when he's talking about, what is doable, and I'd like to see, and we have the option to always make changes, but it never hurts, and communications to start at the beginning.
I also agree that, um, one of the things in the survey that I found to be troubling or, I, I, maybe a little less understandable to me, was that people didn't feel that there was a perception that, that we welcome their input, and I think we certainly do, we just need to keep telling them that we do and, and keep thanking them when they do come. And every time they do, ask them to bring some neighbors with them and, and, and keep building it that way. Those numbers will go up as we provide them more opportunities.
If we're going to get citizen feedback, probably I should do it before the holidays, because people are going to be pretty busy shopping and Christmas sort of things, so I think I'd do it before then, if you're going to do it.
Just trying to put my head around it, sir, but thank you for that. Could, could I suggest that, I mean, again, this is going to be on every work session issue, could I, could I ask the council to kind of, I know I'm hitting you with it cold tonight, to kind of consider it, um, and just let me know if you'd, you know, I'll, I'll have it as a topic for after the July 6th, um, one work session with the council, after the strategic planning, because it'll be on, that's a work session format as well. And perhaps by then, you can kind of give me your thoughts on whether or not you'd even, again, if you'd prefer it be an informational component, and you feel like you're getting enough input from your folks that you can, or, you know, that you can be making a decision that you're comfortable with. Without that, the last bond issue we did, it was, which was a successful bond issue, there was no town hall type component to it, with the exception of a couple of informational meetings that we had with folks. So just items for you to be considering going forward.
All righty. Is there anything else tonight?
Uh, I do have one item under other to, yeah, press your patience a little bit further. The, uh, the committee that, that put together the quarterly city manager evaluation, did send that out to you all a couple of weeks ago. The, the quarterly evaluation, the, the month for that is June, so I, I would be interested in some feedback from the city council on whether you would like to see that next week after the regular meeting, whether you would like to conduct that quarterly evaluation with me, which would be June 22nd, after the joint meeting with the park board on June 29th, or after the work session on July 6th. Which one of those would you all be most comfortable with?
I'm, I'm more in favor of doing it after the joint meeting, just because the joint meetings tend to be a little shorter, and if we get stuck with a lot of actual city business on the dais, that work, that executive session could get rather lengthy, and we want to give proper respect to you, so I, I would lean, unless you tell us otherwise, as far as the agenda for that joint meeting, I, I would favor that one.
I was going to choose the 22nd, I'll be out of town on the 29th, and I, it sounds like the 6th will probably be pretty intense, so we probably, I wouldn't choose that date, so.
That was going to be my input, the 6th is going to be taxing us to our limit, and I, I, I want to be fresh and alert and not so ready to leave here when we go through that. So I, I'm agreeing with, with what Mr. Morehead and Mrs. Abdalwad have just suggested, so.
Very good. June 22nd, okay with everyone then? Next week? Great. Thank you so much.
So as far as distributing that document, does everyone still have that document? Do we need to redistribute it? Everybody's good, so I don't need to send that out again? Send it to you again, okay?
Quick question, are we planning on filling out that document? Are we just going to be reviewing it over what's, are we just using that as, as, as a guide, or do we want to fill it out, or?
Um, in my opinion, it would be better to actually fill it out and just write your ideas. It's not that you're going to answer every question, because we don't need to talk through every question every time. The questions are basically there to jog your brain as to what fits under this category. So considering the last quarter, um, what has happened that falls into each of those categories that is something that you feel like we need to discuss, whether positive or area of improvement. So you might not have something in every area, but if you have something, for me, it's beneficial to write it down, but I guess it's your call ultimately. Unless, Jim, do you want something in writing? I didn't think we'd write these and give them to you, more just to lead discussion.
Right. That, that is what I was thinking.
So when we fill it out, we want to send it to the mayor when we're finished?
Just keep it.
Just keep it?
Keep it.
Just, just to kind of guide the discussion that night, so we're not walking in and everybody kind of looking at each other, what do we want to talk about, you know?
Anything else?
No, sir, I promise.
You have something?
Ask, so, we've agreed that that's a document we're going to use for the quarterly review? Is that what we're going to use?
I didn't hear any feedback from anyone, so I assumed that it was good as written.
One of the things we can do is, after we get through the discussion, the subcommittee can always go back if something's brought up during the meeting that, for example, if maybe there's too much there and we need to cut that back or whatever, I mean, we'll just kind of allow the meeting to guide itself, and if, if it needs to be, we can always jump in.
Okay. Motion for adjournment? We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, management team.